Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, March 10th. It's 5:30 PM and we only have one item on our agenda tonight and that is to hear public comment related to the change in the Communications Department location. And I just wanted to make a few comments before we take this up and not to prejudice anybody one way or the other, but just to reiterate the fact that this is, this may be new to Falmouth, but it's not new on the Cape and it's not new in the state and it's not new in the country, that all over the country counties have been obviously under a different type of leadership than we have here under home rule, have had regional dispatch for some time. And I know that the sheriff and a couple of police chiefs on the Cape and a few others made a trip to Onondahico County in the upper state New York and looked at the facility that they had there because a number of, the Regional Emergency Planning Committee for Cape Cod has been looking at that. It's made up of a number of chiefs on the Cape, both police and fire, and they've been looking at how they might be able to do something like that regionally on the Cape with both police and fire. There's been a lot of discussion about it, but as you know, and if you've, you're here because you do know something about it, is that it's not easy to do something like that. And if we're, if it were to be done regionally on the Cape, it would obviously require a new facility and a lot of changes, a lot of organizational changes and union implications and all of that. But now in Falmouth, we're in a position where our equipment is old and not, and needs to be replaced and it's an opportunity to, to combine those services in both police and fire. Obviously for financial reasons, it's less expensive to do it that way, but it's also, it's also moving forward with the way things are going, not only countywide, but also in the state and elsewhere. I recall when Governor Patrick was first elected, he made the statement that he would like to see five regional dispatch centers in the state. He mentioned that California has three, Maryland has something like four or five, and other states are moving in that direction. But those states don't have home rule like we do and we do things internally first before we spread out and engage others in the process. So, and at this time, I think the town manager and the staff, the chiefs and the Board of Selectmen have been reviewing this plan and we see a lot of merit in this and we, but we want to hear from you because we know at town meeting last time, it did not pass. And there were probably any number of reasons why it didn't. We could all come up with a reason why we think it didn't pass, but it's also on the, on the warrant again for this April town meeting. And we don't think we've really had enough public comment. We need to hear from people who live here and people who could possibly be affected by it, people who work in their departments. So that's the purpose of this meeting tonight is to provide the opportunity for more people to come and have their, and make their comments about their opinions regarding a consolidated dispatch center, both the idea itself and the proposed location. You may know from the materials that have been provided that there were approximately 13 locations offered as possibilities. Some turned out to be more expensive or some turned out to be not quite large enough, or some turned out to be just not appropriate, maybe not the best locations. So Doug, you wanted to make a comment?
I just thought it was, I thought that the idea of the consolidated dispatch did pass town meeting. It was the full funding that was requested to, of $250,000 that was defeated. That that was really what we're talking about is where is it going to go? But I thought the idea of actually consulting it did pass.
I thought it was the other way around.
Actually, they, they voted money to replace the equipment.
Yeah.
$755,000 and essentially endorsing that concept in my view. And only, instead of 250,000, only 50,000 was voted for the physical facility. So as, as noted, we'll be going back in April to ask for supplemental dollars depending upon how this Board of Selectmen determines you want to proceed with the physical space.
Because my interpretation of the vote was go ahead and do it. Come back to us with a suggestion or get more information from the town as to where, what the right location is. And that's what I really feel the purpose of this meeting was to get input from the public as to the different options for locations. But I got a message from the town, go ahead and do it, but tell us where.
And I would concur with Doug in the sense that the, it recognized the fact that the current equipment is defunct and that we have no choice. We do have to move forward. Sam?
Point of order. I think we're supposed to start with a pledge to our normal.
Oh, didn't we do that? I'm sorry. Well, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think we have one announcement to make.
I just want to continue the string of announcements from last week. We did have two girls' basketball teams from Falmouth compete in the MAA tournament. Unfortunately, both teams, the Falmouth Academy and Falmouth High School girls' teams, lost in the semifinals in two very tough matches. But the girls' varsity hockey team is continuing. They won their last game 6-2, I believe against Winchester. And on Sunday morning at the TD Bank North, we'll either be competing at nine o'clock or 11 o'clock for the state championship. I think this is either the third or four, third out of four years they've been there. So we want to wish them well on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and hope that people can go up to Boston on Sunday and cheer them on.
Great. Thanks Doug. All right. We're going to move on, but let's, you know, be clear that we, what passed at town meeting was a certain amount of funding that would help to fund the equipment, but the article itself did not pass. So, in terms of location. So what we want to do tonight is hear the comments from the public regarding the 13 locations that have been proposed, as well as the location that has been selected by the town manager and the Board of Selectmen at this point, which is the Gus Canty Center. So I will open it up for comments and you have two minutes. So who would like to start?
Two minutes?
Well, yeah, it's a public comment period and our public comment policy is two minutes. If we have time at the end, we can come back around and, and do it again.
I'll try to read fast.
Pardon me?
I'll try to read fast.
Okay. So who, so who would like to go first? Yes, Alden Cook.
Good evening. My name is Alden Cook. I am a retired firefighter, paramedic from the Falmouth Fire Department. I am currently not a member of any labor organization or union whatsoever. I speak only as a private citizen and the thoughts that I am going to elicit are my own and no one else's. Thank you. The proposed relocation of dispatching to the Falmouth Recreation Center building is totally unsuitable. This location lacks every aspect of the needed physical requirements and technical support. At the outset, achieving physical security for a communications center within this building will be expensive and extremely complicated at a cost of approximately $30,000. There are no sanitary facilities available with this proposed area and kitchen facilities are not nearby. The building lacks a properly sized emergency generator at a cost of approximately $100,000. A suitable radio tower would have to be constructed even if it were to link with the present tower at the Falmouth Fire Department at a cost of about $50,000. The adequate primary power feeds do not exist and a telephone system with the necessary communication lines must be installed. The cost there would be around $50,000 to $80,000. The Fire Department uses multiple communication systems above and beyond its primary 800 megahertz dispatching frequencies. It has two other frequencies it would be required to link to a remote center. The Police Department also has a secondary voice communication frequency to its primary 800 megahertz system. The DPW and the MES both require transmitters and antennas. These are currently already located at the Fire Department. The concept of locating one of the most critical emergency service components in our community in a building that is constantly populated with unmonitored public persons would be a poor decision. Finally, and not to be ignored, is a critical shortage of parking for ongoing dispatch shifts during large events at the Recreation Center or full of field. At times, every single available space is filled to overflowing, including the Edward Marks Building and the Police Department. Clearly, there exists a viable ready-made alternative for the location of the combined dispatch center. This is the third floor of the Falmouth Fire Department. The space currently houses the Fire Department exercise area. This facility can be relocated to the basement of the headquarters building or the basement of the East Falmouth Fire Station, or the administration of the town could also reach a contract agreement with one of five existing commercial gym facilities in the town.
Alden, your time is up, but you can come back if we have time after the others speak.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to speak? Andy Dufresne?
This is a very important decision that has to be made by the Board of Selectmen and from what I understand, the decision for the recommendation to town meeting has to be done in a very short period of time. There's been considerable study made of the buildings that are available and from what is my understanding, it is a citizen of the town, that it has to be an existing building in a town-owned facility. My knowledge of the Police Department, the recreation, not the recreation, I called it a community building. When we built that, it was a community building. And the functions of the community building and the Police Department, I do not feel are adequate to support this new concept of a joint communications center. The Fire Department, in my personal opinion, has a facility up on the third floor, or a section up on the third floor that would be adequate to house a multi-unit communications center. The town of Falmouth made the investment not that long ago to completely modernize that building and make it accessible to everybody. At the last town meeting, and I supported the article, was a $600,000 payment to buy excess buildings next for increased parking. Of all of the units that I have looked at, the, the PDO's tavern, which is referred to as the Eddie Marks Building, is totally unsuitable. As a selectman, I went through that building and I was the guy that condemned it. And all of the other potential buildings were possibility of the DPW building, but there again, they have a function that's very valuable, especially this time of year. So to me, the only building that has the generator with the capabilities and the antenna already in place would be the Fire Headquarters on Main Street, which would be immediately available for the town manager, for the Board of Selectmen, or any other person that would want to visit that facility to see how it functions.
Your time is up, Andy.
That's all I got to say.
But you can come back.
But I think that's the building that we should consider.
Okay. Yes. Mr. Donohue?
Robert Donohue, precinct three. I also feel that the Gus Canty Center is the worst possible choice that you could make. I believe that the communications center, from what Andy has said, and I've heard a couple of other people say, the Fire Department seems to be the most logical place, the least expensive way for us to go if you don't think it's practical to build a new building. And I guess that's kind of out of the question. So let's deal with what we have to deal with. But I want to really say that I hope we're not going to do this on the nickel. I hope we're going to spend the dollar. That this communication system has to be something that will take care of our needs, not just now, but way into the future, and also take care of the protection of the town. All the communications that's over those networks should be recorded, including cell phones and any other private phones that are out there, to protect you folks so that when something happens and look at the country, things have happened in little towns like Falmouth. And it seems to be little towns like Falmouth that these things happen in, that the, the people in the selectmen or people who in government don't have a clue what happened because there's no fallback, there's no recordings, it's all a matter of word of mouth, and everybody is trying to protect their little niche. So please, for your sake, for your future selectmen's and for the town's sake, insurance-wise, please do not go light on, on this. Go the right way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Donohue. Yes.
Good evening. I'm Scott Starrett. I represent the Falmouth Firefighters Local 1397. I believe last week at the selectmen's meeting, Mr. Suso indicated that because of labor agreement issues, the fire station was not a suitable location for the dispatch center. The local recognizes the fact that the selectmen and the town administration wants to combine town-wide dispatch services. We also recognize that this is, it's the goal of the administration to combine the dispatch outside the premise of the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department. The union local understands why the town would find the headquarters fire station to be desirable. You have a radio tower, an existing generator that will support a dispatch center. The EOC is there and there's available space on the third floor. Let me be clear, the Falmouth Firefighters Local 1397 does not and will not oppose the dispatch center being located in any Fire Department building regardless of any labor group that represents the new dispatchers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Chris Lemay. I'm a current dispatcher, Falmouth Fire Department, part of the Local 1397. I'm here on my own accord though. I'm not representing the union or anything like that. Didn't even know Mr. Starrett was going to be here. I am for unified dispatch if it's done right. The matrix report says that you should only have two dispatches on at any given time, which I believe is not going to be enough. Right now, the police have two, we have one, and at times we have to have somebody else come in and help us out. If you look in the matrix report on the page, it's somewhere in the 40s, there's an APCO report, and it says, towards the bottom, it says, we need 4.68 dispatches. That's on at any given time. And that's my main concern. And I know tonight's supposed to be about the buildings. I'm opposed to Recreation Department because it's going to need considerable sound editing. When we are answering 911 calls, especially on the police side, if somebody's whispering in the phone, you're going to have to hear it. And during basketball games or any other event, that building is very echoey and it's, the noise goes throughout the whole building. The one place that is viable, like everyone else said, is the third floor of the Fire Department. All the infrastructure is already there and it'll be a very low-cost build-out.
Thank you. Anybody else?
One second.
Well, yeah, somebody else has spoken for you though. If you, if you just have a question. This is not for a question, it's only comments because we're not commenting on it. Yes, Helen Kennedy?
Hi, my name is Helen Kennedy. I'm the Recreation Director. And I have worked in the Gus Canty Community Center since it's been open in 1988. No one knows better the use of that building than me. And the space that you're looking at, I honestly can say that it is underutilized. I can count on my hands, fingers on my hands, and the time, the number of times that particular area has been used. And I'm just looking at it from a point of view where the town is looking for space that is available space. We are a community center. We're not just a recreation center. We are a community center. And I think that if space is available in that building and it can be retrofitted to soundproofing and everything else, as a Recreation Director, like I said, someone that's in that building all, all the time, I would welcome them. I would welcome the police and the firemen in that building. I know members of my Recreation Committee do disagree with, with the placement, but personally, I, I have no problem with it.
Thank you.
Brian Coyne, Precinct 8. I'm also, I'm a member of the Recreation Committee. We did take a vote. We, as a committee, the committee supports not foregoing at the stage area, even though it does have the limited uses. We think it's an asset to the town, just that it's available. We don't know what's coming down the road, what event needs to happen. It's a public stage and a public building. So it does have a value, even though it might be, as Helen said, underutilized. I did take a tour of the Police Department. So now I'm going to speak just as Brian. The Recreation Committee has nothing to do with this. And I walked around and I found that the dispatch centers had a value in their current location, which obviously, that's just my opinion, to those buildings. The pulse of the building, the feel of it, it was very active. But I agree with most of the people here, if it is going to be consolidated and relocated, the Fire Department seems like a no-brainer. The majority of the infrastructure is there. And it has more infrastructure, it appeared to me, than the Police Department's communication system. Seemed much more intricate over at the firehouse. Multi-tiered systems and pole, they were talking about pole boxes and the wires is all there coming into that building. So as a taxpayer, I would support maybe investigating that third floor. The equipment up there, maybe the fitness equipment, a town fitness room could be located in the Recreation Center. Seems like a no-brainer. And we could try to find some space in the Recreation Department building at Gus Canty for that equipment if they can't find something in the firehouses themselves already. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alden, do you want to finish your comments?
Thank you. I'll be as quick as I can.
That's okay.
This is continuing on about the third floor space. The third floor space at the Falmouth Fire Department is heated, cooled, and lighted, and it has adequate existing restroom. and it has adequate existing restroom facilities with showers and a locker room within this space. There are dual means of egress for the space, a handicapped accessible elevator, and security can be very economically instituted. Nothing else would be located on this floor level. Telephone and communication lines already exist within the building. For instance, a 200-pair telephone cable comes into the headquarters building. The telephone and, the aforementioned issues of adequate-sized emergency generator, radio tower, radio transmitter outbuilding are already in place and will require, will require no modifications except installation of police radio antennas and transmitters at minimal cost. The DPW and MES radio transmitters are already in the transmitter shelter with antennas installed on the existing radio tower at the fire department. No modifications are required for these. In close proximity on the second floor of the fire department is a small kitchen facility which can serve the dispatch personnel adequately. Also, the Falmouth Emergency Operations Center is on the second floor. The square footage of the third floor space is approximately 750 square feet by my personal measurement, enough for operating consoles and administrative and hardware requirements. The area is ideally isolated from the general public, yet easily accessible for dispatchers and administrators. There will be no issues for parking, as expanded parking for this facility has recently been purchased by the town. No reasonable argument can be made for expenditure of municipal revenues to duplicate existing technology and physical facilities which are already in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andy?
You've had strong support for the fire department, and I don't want to parrot anything that's been said because I personally think that's the best location. What I would like to say about the, the recreation building, I usually don't call it the recreation building, it's a community building. The long-range plans, if we can ever move the ball field, was for additional recreational facilities. So there are, in the plans of the recreation department, long-range goals for the use of every bit of that building. So if we ever move the ball field, which gives us that 14-feet, 14-week restriction of use, we can expand the facilities at that particular building for outdoor recreational facilities for both male and female, volleyball, handball, any type of outdoor facilities which would use that lower level. So again, I strongly support the fire department. I do not support the recreation building because in the long term, this board, or our future board, is going to be making decisions of, based on the recommendations of the recreation committee, for additional uses for those, those facilities. I've been a strong supporter of that building. I helped promote it back in 1987 when I said, well, you people said. And I think it's been a plus for the town of Falmouth. And for the fire department facilities, I can only praise them. I still think that that's the ideal location. You've had several people rabbit the same decisions. I would hope you'll give that serious consideration. It's your decision to make.
Thank you, Andy. Former Chief Baker, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Former Mashpee Chief Baker.
Well, it's a chief always.
Oh, right.
Thank you for recognizing me. Good evening, Board. I'm George Baker. I'm a resident of Falmouth, Pinecrest Beach Drive. I'm a graduate of Falmouth High School, so Falmouth is my community. I was fortunate or unfortunate to spend the last 30 years of my life working for the town of Mashpee as their fire chief. I had a lot of experience in the different communications systems, and I'm here to, to hope you to reconsider and to consider looking at the regional answer. I know money is an answer, is a issue for Falmouth. I know that control, and I don't say that in a bad way, I say control in a good way is important. And the Commonwealth has taken 911 money and given it to the sheriff to answer the regional communication issue for Barnstable County. It's two years away, but it's being built. And give your community time to go through the collective bargaining issues, the labor issues, the communication issues, the wiring issues. Bringing it to a single point, bringing it to the fire station, the police station, we have wonderful service in Falmouth. They've served my community, my family well. The challenge is, is that if it's in the fire station, my experience, my communication when I was the fire chief in Mashpee was in the police station. It was run by the police chief. He held the switch. Great guy, worked with him well. At the end of the day, it was in the police station. The end of the day, if it's in the fire station, it's in the fire station. It's not a joint center. It's a service being provided by another public safety official who, at the end of the day, has the same goals, uses a different set of tools. And when push comes to shove, if it's a bad car crash, and you have med flight coming, and you have investigators coming, and you have sand trucks coming, a large center that has the ability to parse out those requirements will be a benefit to Falmouth. So I ask you to reconsider. I stand ready to help you in any way. I stand ready to help my chiefs if they need any assistance. But I really think, looking at the regional approach, there was, I believe it was the same company that did your report, did a mini-page report for the county recommending the best answer for Barnstable County as a whole was a regional center. I was surprised it was only glanced over in the matrix report for Falmouth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, George. Mr. Donahue?
Bob Donahue, precinct three. To be very honest with you, I came here thinking that the regional option was totally off the table. I am in favor of the regional option, if, if we can get through for the two years that it's going to take the sheriff to get his act together and, and do whatever has to be done on that end of it. That is the very best way of doing it. If we have to go to a town center, I also would recommend that it be an independent department reporting to the town manager under the selectmen with input, only input from the chiefs and other department heads that might have a, some, some money in the game. If you do not do it that way, then it's going to become a fighting, and you, sir, are going to be the guy that, that your phone is going to be ringing every, every day saying, they did this to me, or they're not cooperating with my people, or, you know, all those games that, that play. It has to be a separate department, answerable to you only, with input from them. And I hope I'm not stepping on anybody's toes suggesting that, but I really think that's critical if we, if, if we can't go the regional way. If we can go the regional way, if we can get by for a couple of years on what we have, even if it costs us $100,000 to get through the couple of years, maybe that's a better option, looking at the savings, you know, way down the line. And now, but thank you, and allowing me to come back up.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Anybody else? Well, thank you very much for your comments. They were very well said and very helpful.
Madam Chair, can I make one comment?
Yes, sure.
I just feel, from a standpoint of accuracy, I should clarify, one of these earlier speakers who represented himself as being a member of the firefighters' union attributed a comment to me regarding a preferred alternative and some comment about a union. And of course, as the board is aware, I made no such comment when we presented this spreadsheet to the board most recently, so I felt that I should clarify that. We are involved in impact bargaining, as the board is aware, with all unions that have agreed to come to the table with us. Unfortunately, one noteworthy union has consistently declined to come to the table, and instead has been making some comments in public forum, but again, declined to impact bargain. So I'd be remiss if I did not note that for the board, and I did, I do want to clarify what was said from what was not said in terms of what's been laid out here for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our meeting. Motion to adjourn?
I'm so moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.